So only if there you have extreme immunity, yes. Okay, so what the whole of this?
I'm a real expert in airman for me, we both. Welcome to uh make us uh P R T still. Um the following major at the side, so. By your. I don't get to me, the future says. Is you twenty five seconds ago. Yeah, we're instantly accessible.
Hello, hello, I'm testing. Yeah. Okay, this is Lloyd now, what was yours?
Thank you. Uh first start, I'm from anybody uh or miss. Down that Lord. You're on track, I'd be safe. Okay, so um this month they is. Alright, uh this this month is electrical safety awareness. Um just getting you guys a couple of tips. So first and foremost, not without. Because uh Laura's been bad. Um so let's not do the absolute. He's my tank. So we also got here. If you want what its outlet is the best thing to do is safest. Make sure you don't plug any unused appliances to that uh prevent overheating during the energy. As we all wanted to keep pores dry, visible, and then remind them of the rugs or the award. Um also uh check them regularly for any type of um. Uh issues that you might have like damaged. Um uh wires or anything like that, and if it's the right wires or bulbs. I I I know many people that just wanna come in and fix it, so you can use any type, that's not safe. Um then the last page reportedly issues, especially if you have work and exposed waters uh to your facility. So thank you all. Alright, thank you, Mr. Lord. Uh and we're actually but we.
My pleasure, we just specify on the highest state. Considerably. And he's like, he got to follow.
Victor Angry.
There.
Andrea Bailey. Anybody?
Present.
Margaret Franklin, Tom Gordy.
Yeah.
Bob Weir.
Here.
Deshunder Jefferson, Karen Mills.
Here.
Idris O'Connor, Kim Short, Yesli Vega. Denisea Allen.
Here.
Uh Bar Pamela Young.
Present.
Meg Bunkie, Daryl English, Rob Smith.
Here.
Sonia Vasquez Luna. Daryl Moore.
Here.
Alana Mensing, Janan Holmes.
Here.
Will McIntosh, Deborah Frazier.
Here.
Lori Hayes, Jacob Lane, Kevin Marshall, Tiffany Robinson, Todd Horsley.
Here.
Rochelle Henderson Junior. Josh Thomas. Jeremy McPike.
Here.
Mister Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I get a motion of the uh?
Um.
Second, okay, you have motion commissioner Allen, second commissioner Moore. Um, we need to leave the agenda, none, there we go. Okay. Is this all in favor? Okay, all the favor? And I'm gonna be opposed. Any abstentions? Yeah, I said, thank you, man. I kind of agree with forty minutes. So move Mister Chairman, so again. Uh where did that second come? Ah, you got the action of a cop. You got a motion commissioner Moore, second commissioner McPike. Any discussions? Uh Eric Dunn, uh all in favor? Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Yeah, I said, thank you, man. Mister Doc, sir, what are yours?
Thank you, Mister Chair, did you mean uh? Uh just a couple of things here, we do have a couple of uh. And you do have this. C E O reporting back in. Uh just wanted to. Report a little update on ridership. And we've uh. For the month of April. Uh we saw ridership a hundred and thirty one percent above what we saw in January. It's been a team that's. Continue to tick up, we did see, of course, around. Uh because there's still some spring break. Weeks going on and. Around the Easter holiday, just like that, not the platter. But essentially, the first week and the last week. Was was definitely a robust ridership. Uh reliability uh dipped a little bit for the month of April, this is uh final audit and what other right about the eight percent mark. Did have some weather related uh issues in addition to just general rail. If I may, Mister Chair, I'll summarize the 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 next two agenda items, if you will.
Yes.
And I believe you'll take that. So um. I'll start with uh six point two. Uh seeking approval. For the seeking approval for the construction manager, general contractor delivery method. Uh for the B R E's LaFon Station and Four Track Project, just as a. Just as a quick background or summary. Um. In any event, that that B R E uh. Believes utilizing the alternate delivery method for from a procurement standpoint. Our procurement policy that we share with P R T C, of course. Uh requires an analysis. So we had a third party consultant do an analysis for us. And all that information is in your bag. And to. The analysis. Showed that a alternate delivery method via the C M G C for short. Uh is the preferred method and uh. And of course, the uh. The B R E operations will. Previously reviewed this and approved that or recommended. That for community as well. Uh six point three, uh just seeking authorization to enter into a M uh M O U with uh. With several entities as described in the uh. The back board package and just uh. Just to kind of summarize that a little bit, so. For many years, B R E. In addition to the entities that are described. As part of the M O U, we've been collaborating, coordinating. On on essentially regional rail as it relates to. Um um predominantly B R E service, Amtrak service, Mark Trend service in Maryland. And Washington Union Station. And a lot of the coordination happens. Happened more formally from a Northeast Border Commission standpoint, which covers. Washington Union Station North. But with the increase in in, of course, the infrastructure improvements. In the Commonwealth of Virginia, we felt that we collectively felt that we needed a more. A more collaborative, more coordinated effort. Uh to essentially bring the Virginia projects into discussion as well. So anyway. That M O U is just described in there, it's a non-binding M O U, it's not uh. It really just formalizes. At at a at a. At a large level, it just formalizes what we've already been done, but then we does put some structure and stuff to our collaborative. Those are my summaries. Mister Chair for this.
Alright, well, thank you, sir. Any any questions, but alright. Mister Moon.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, thank you, Mister Dalton, for the presentation, um. I appreciate you reporting the the number, the increase that we have of ridership. Over previous months, this is a quick question on that. Um you know, in other venues of transit and sort of commuter travel, we sort of see the three. Latest where we have pre-COVID, during COVID, and now what we call the post-COVID. And at first, especially given the federal return to work, folks are expected for post-COVID to look a lot like. The ridership patterns with pre-COVID, but we seen another news that hasn't happened to people, still changed how they do, even though they're getting back on the train, they're getting back on the bus. Have you seen a been able to compare that yet, what that looks like? Some of the people are coming back on the train, but they taking the train at the same time they were pre-COVID, or they sort of shifting those patterns?
Yeah, uh thank you for the question, that's a good question, and 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 I'll preface my response by, we still continue to see an increase, right, so we're not. We're not at a point where we can. I I guess. You know, proclaim that we've settled out. You know, the only the only difference maybe pre-COVID to post-COVID right now, we took pre-COVID, we saw a balance. Between our two lines, the Masses line and Frederickburg line, we saw a the balance of about fifty five percent of our riders that are on the Frederickburg line. And forty five percent of those. Riders along the Masses line. Uh now, what we see is about sixty five percent on the Frederickburg line, about thirty five percent, so that's. That's one one area, um. You know, for us, Fridays are still a down day for us relative to the rest of the week. But actually, Mondays are increasing quite a bit for us, so. And again, I'll I'll keep. Reporting as the months go on to let you know. Where things uh you know, set around with. But but those are the only things that seem about. Free during.
Thank you, uh any air? Okay, that here we go, yes. Thanks, Chair, there's six points, you just remind us. Here you go.
So we are right at the. Uh thirty percent design phase. Um and so with this action here, what we'll do then now is go. Essentially go procure. Uh we'll 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 do a request for qualifications first, so. Look at it over the next six months, uh we'll be in that uh. Procurement solicitation phase. Um and then once we can bring a C N G C contractor onboard, then we're gonna obviously push to the sixty nine. Sixty to ninety percent phase. Um. The with with the goal of finishing final design. And if everything goes okay, execute contract for construction, what about as early as mid twenty seventeen? Or twenty twenty seven, sorry, uh maybe even later, twenty twenty seven, the ultimate goal is to have. That project, again, it's it's a. Passover station expansion and fourth track that marries up with the broader Longbridge projects in that twenty twenty nine time. So we're on we're on base for that.
Alright. Again, the adoption.
Second.
Uh. Okay, so we have a motion, this is the problem, seconded. Any discussion? Very nice, can you say hello one rope? Actually, okay, all. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Yeah, I said. Thank you, sir, I'll be good, thank you, sir, thank you, sir.
Everybody stay safe.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking with that three, I know. How it's going to go, and so now we're at public comments, I mean, you have any expressions? Uh, Robert. The one, one. Oh, oh, okay, reading, okay, you have a reading comment, you all have that to go in front of this. Okay. Um. We're all that, and so that belongs to the citizen. Can I get a motion? Check, they got a motion. Mister Allen, where's my thing? Okay. Right, sir, all that second. And they're equal to stuff in my list, so all in favor? All right, good. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Yeah, I said, thank you all very much. Now we're on the doctor's side of this, there is.
Yes. Um it was it's probably out of order, but um focus on jumping to the very. Last month, we're able to defer business, but I wanted to refresh our ridership success the month of March, because we're here. And then include some information about it. You ridership for March is these rapidly, you average daily ridership jumping up twenty percent from February to fifty percent. And that was March. Uh various preliminary numbers showed a flat March to April. But we had spring break, a lot of spring break, and so for us to show a flat performance in March and April is outstanding. Very much a good briefing, I come to our express circles, so throughout six twelve Gainesville Pentagon, the A D R of March Ridership was more than July and August combined. So that's a great example. March, April had over fifty thousand trips, which is more than November through February. Combined. So we're talking large volumes of commuter ridership, stretch ridership. Stafford to D C and Stafford to Pentagon had record-setting ridership for April, just shy of seventeen thousand combined trips for those two routes. And we were excited when the entire five southern most routes bragged ten thousand trips. So tremendous, tremendous ridership growth. Metro Express carried over uh eighteen thousand five hundred passengers on the Prince William Metro Express alone. Met Manassas Metro Express had over ten thousand, dropping slightly for March, but also carrying a very healthy. Local bus ridership is up, is mostly flat with impacts of the spring break, and also notable community politics, we've seen a big uh uptick in terms of ridership there. And with the booming ridership, um but we saw in fall, we had expected to break to two million passenger mark sometime in late June. We are at one point eight three million trips through late April, which means both like three to two million rider market. So we are forty five days ahead of of projected track. Eastern local routes continue to boom, three routes carried over ten thousand passengers among the April, that's with the spring break, and that includes Route ninety one Dale City. Fifty two, which is our Route one route, Woodbridge, Aurora, and Route fifty three, Dumbrice Connector, and right behind it, Route ninety three, Woodbridge, Chin Center, and we're coming just behind that, you know. And all of this data completely complete as it. The yeah, about twenty hours ago, so we're still figuring out and pulling some of the final pieces of information. Also important, it's April twenty first, we launched more trips on motor fuel tax committed. Not grant funded, but motor fuels tax funded, Lake Ridge to Pentagon. And also D C to the University State Department routes, we used the growing ridership that we saw through fall and into spring. Combined with the increased revenues that we're bringing in from passenger fare that jumped from nine dollars to eleven dollars to return those trips that were lost in July. So at this point, we've essentially matched our revenue strength, except we're able to maximize the grant-funded services to match ridership growth. We will continue to watch that. Throughout summer, our goal is to just get to when schools out, because we see a natural dip that should alleviate some of the overcrowding. But if it stays flat and consistent, we. We're gonna have slower pounding concerns and issues as we reach into. August, September. We are now in that baseline operational mode, but we're slated for our next service change in August or November, so that's the big day. Budget update, at this point, we've heard from, I believe, all of our jurisdictions. Um is that for all six jurisdictions, last minutes, or? Okay, I'll have to follow that up, I know that the important one, I didn't say, yes, everyone's a, but the really important one that keeps our buzz in front of the. Is from Prince William County, and they they passed the budget. Uh we have, we're in good shape for next year, so we don't have any service reductions, we are at a at stability. And so we're very thankful for the hard work that the the finance staff put in from our side, but also the finance staff on our department's. Really appreciate the opportunity, like the issue sent some opportunities on the the top budget finance committee that supervisor voting chairs. Was able to bring in some a what-if scenario, what if some new revenues are there, so we've got that um in the hopper, phone or ring and say, there's X amount of cash, what can we do? We're in service services and we're hopefully. But so at this point, we're expecting a very stable uh year-over-year in terms of ridership and performance. Shifting gears. Before we migrate into um some other items. What were you doing on the morning of Thursday, April thirteenth? Two thousand. I was probably going to work in the mayor's office and stud sweating, my com- my comps. Jeff Morphet showed up, started his first day with then P R T C, now Ami Ride. To be to join us in our customer service department, so on April thirteenth of this past um this month. He celebrated his twenty five years, a little bit about Jeff. Jeff. Your dedication. Your love for all things transit is palpable. Uh he does everything below the whistle, lets you train and help the bugs. When he, he loves. What he does. Without question, and we love the work he does for us, our deepest appreciation for the time and energy. Put into this organization and contributions you made. People enjoy working with you and you working with others shows your loyalty, your expertise, by the way. A lot of times, we have a customer, he's got that really complex trip, it goes to Jeff, to get the email from the customer. It's just moved here and it's this really wonky. Commute, trying to figure things out, if Jeff can't really figure it out, we don't think too many others can, but also pulls in. His his teammates to say, hey, I got this idea, what do you guys think? And really has a very positive, unwavering attitude that instrumental in our success and has been a stalwart on the bond in our customers. Love them, we're thankful. Truly grateful for everything you've done, you're a valued member of the family, we're lucky to have you. Thank you for everything, and we have your twenty five year tent, we have your certificate, we'd love to have you and your lovely wife Teresa. Join us for a picture so we can celebrate. You somebody.
I mean, yes. That's a twenty five years. Can I get on this?
Yep, come on over here.
Okay, if you run that by the. Here we go. Alright.
Thanks, I guess, it's basically quick to you again, but all. The good news is the celebrations are longer than a ride. We have some more. Uh we also got to celebrate, we've won the innovative project. From the Green for Business Council. From Prince William County. And a top three award for our work in environmental stewardship, our electric vehicles, and our microtrans. So, by the way, these are some of the heaviest trophies that ever held, I've been passed one that way, so you don't think I'm lying. Yeah, it's a weapon, it's a weapon, uh we will, yes, you will. We have our own independent green team, if you guys are familiar, you saw our staff, they've got the full yellow vest. We have adopt the highway, we do environmental, it's inside the organization, we will use it slightly. It's not just an environmental issue, it helps reduce waste in the organization, it's awesome. And it's important to market. So I want to really thank the Greens and. A sphere by Joy Walker, our planning department. They have done a great job on that, we're very thankful for their hard work. We are also recognized as best places to work for commuters. So that is one of the things that we had uh been able to develop. We had two initial winners, one was my product and the other was us, and since we give the award, we deserve to be right. The next piece of recognition. And some people that are very proud of us brought to the organization when I arrived, we established a mentor. And I'm going to turn it over to Cynthia Porter Johnson to discuss the mentoring program itself, give a few words, and then we're going to raise some pictures for the person.
Thank you so much. Chair. So the commission. So. It's so fun when we just spend. This is a special. And. Mentees and mentors. Um I'm a co-coach for those programs, um and this, I'm so excited tonight to share all of the accomplishments that experience. Program, and specifically the M seven class. Um I will say that it is bitter sweet this evening because. This time around, my fellow co-coach, um and co-worker, Holly. Uh we've done this program together for years, and she has been. Uh however, I am happy to share that um we rise on the program literature, Ben Matters. Will be joining me as co-coach. As always, uh we have lots to thank of, we're starting this wonderful program. And also, we have all of the participants, everyone who has participated in this program. From on the right staff to the R E staff. And also to our contractor staff, we have First Transit and the work Keolis. Um because without them, there is no program. So our success in this program continues to exceed our expectations. Um every class, I feel like we just saw higher and higher. From our lunch and lures to our mentoring field trips to the western side of the Prince William County. We're always adding something new and exciting. Um in this particular M seven class, have the pleasure of reading. The conscious workplace, fortify your culture to thrive and give prizes. And we were very fortunate to have the actual author of that book. Miss Shaw or Roman, she will even come here with us here at P R T C on lunch and. Where we discussed her book, of course, and also she's able to share some of her personal experiences on leadership and mentor. And another special event that we have as part of this program is called our Spotlight Speaker Series. Um and this year, we were able to have supervisor Andrew L. Bailey. She served as our Spotlight Light Speaker. Um so I wanted to share with you all, she's not here tonight, but she's a great storyteller. And she shared great advice with us and valuable insight uh to help us on our journeys. Um it's so inspiring and had a lasting impact on those who attended. Um you know, our class is still talking about us. Um and so we're so thankful from this family. So you're also cited for our mentees and mentors, I mean, this, these, this is one of the best classes we've had. Um they're an awesome group of individuals, um it's been a pleasure for me to work with them. And I'm so proud of all that they've accomplished on a personal and professional level. Uh they share especially. And they have a mentee project that they're responsible for doing, this is one of my favorite parts of the program. Um and this time around, the the mentees, they targeted with fostering futures. Um and to provide donations for basic home essentials to age eighteen to twenty one. Who are transitioning from foster care to adulthood. Out of and into the workforce, so this was truly a needed and worthy project. And so tonight, I'm just so grateful that we have one of our M seven mentees. She was very instrumental in selecting this particular project. Um so she's gonna come and share with you all. And we also have Ben Matters, who's gonna come on behalf of the mentors, and he's gonna share. His experiences with being a part of the M seven class. Um so I'm gonna have them come now, Miranda. And then following her, it's. Matters. Thank you all, so much.
So, um, well, thanks, I'm back to line here. So I'm saying I read it. So. Um. Armed with a small budget and a determination to make impact in the lives of others, M seven mentees. Coordinated with the Department of Social Services Fostering Futures Program. To provide donations to those often overlooked and underserved individuals aging out of the foster care system. The Fostering Futures Program identifies individuals who have pursued success. Met set criteria for both education, employment, and personal goals, and have shown an initiative to overcome the odds. The Fostering Futures Programs provides them with basic housing assistance as they step forward into adulthood. Many of these individuals. Um are leaving their current situation with needed households and personal care basics as they get situated in their new home and their new independence. Faced with tight deadlines and a donation window of only a few weeks, the amount of donations received exceeded anyone's expectation. Even now, we still receive requests to continue on during ongoing donations. Um from discovering our own confidence. Insane ability in task management. Plaguing. And other hidden talents, mentees were able to pull together. All of different skills. And create a highly successful project that is self-sustaining, long into the future. M seven mentees were not only able to ensure that the youth in the Fostering Futures Program. Would not only have the basic needs to move into adulthood, but to also take with them the knowledge that the community cares and they are not forgotten. And I would like to read a letter. From Miss Gettrich, she is the program head from Fostering Futures. Dear Miss Howland, we would like to take this opportunity to thank you and those in your mentoring program for your recent donations for your exiting foster care. The fact that you all were so thoughtful to initiate the donation program for fostering youth is so humbling. When we spoke about your mentoring program. When we spoke about your mentoring program wanting to do this, we never imagined the outpouring of generosity that we thought of. You all thought of everything. Because of your evident passion for helping other people, you have provided the department. With a way to ensure that those who are exiting the foster care system. Will have a strong and positive start to their new independent lives. We are thankful and appreciative to all of you for taking time out of your busy schedule. To shop so specifically for items that could be helpful and useful for our youth. You took your hard earned money out of your own wallets to selflessly help others who have needs. We want to express our heartfelt thank you for the humanity you showed to our youth and to members of our community. Sincerely, Jessica McCauley and Diane Gash. And then they sent a lovely card with several signatures. From all the different members of Boston.
I will be brief for you guys. God is a mentor, so other folks and it's my third time actually going through this program. Uh, my first time Christine was my mentor, uh, and it was great. I don't know that naturally we can talk about. And I kind of get illustrations of what this does. An IQ modest organization here, there'll be two kind of our own homework tasks. This is a good way to kind of knock those down and get that good cross collaboration. So every year we get to do this, uh, it kind of reinforces that. Thanks you guys for your.
Actually, I have a quick picture, still Lana.
Let's go.
Declan. Will. Miranda Lana. Do a group picture and then individuals or individuals and. Individual in group or group in individual, you tell us.
Big individual in that group.
All right, Luana, Luana.
Okay.
All right. Finally, someone taller than me. It's always.
I have to feel short right now. I'm surprised. That's a bad one.
All right. And Will, come on in. All right, and everybody, come on in.
The group.
No hide behind her.
Don't get lips close.
All right.
For a little bit, yeah, there you go.
But I hope that the time that. Our team took to talk about the mentoring programs reflects not much of errors. Everybody knows it matters to the public. The very first mentoring program was, here's a budget, something to improve, or the, the building or sort of community, something, and it was a great trade, it was assigned inside the building. It was for the employees, we've evolved from, let's not focus on the organization, let's focus on the community. And to now have something that is start to finish driven by the employees, mentors, mentees, and that much of difference. You'll be is reflective of that we said. That we love what we do, we make an impact for. Who rides, but then it goes beyond just the transit. So I'm very, very appreciative of all of. Uh.
May I say something real fast, I want to thank you for the work you're doing with the fostering. Uh, program, uh, they do the, the point time survey for homelessness, about seven percent. Of the homeless are kids who, who, uh, age out of foster care. They don't have anywhere to go, so this is a very important program to help these kids get. Have success, so thank you for doing that and, uh, look for ways that we can actually help. Uh, support that because it, it, I mean, these kids, I mean, you think about, you can't render parking without a credit. Without credits for life, so helping these kids figure out all these things that they need to just be able to live on their own. Uh, I mean, how many of us, you know, we, you don't have pots and pans, you don't have a mattress, you don't, you know, I mean, you're a mentee, so. Um, so thank you for doing this, thank you.
And I, I was gonna say, we can kind of talk about this because this is really big, so.
Yes.
I wanted to know, we have internship, but I don't have the mentorship. Internship now, just, and I was wondering.
We do, we have, uh, we have what's called a professional development fellow, which is partially funded, thank you, D R B T. They provide funding and. They, they provide the funding and our target group on that is students who are in college or, or graduate students who have an interest in public transportation. Uh, how many former PDFs do we have in the audience, please stand. Or current. A couple of years ago, we had a, in this room, we had a forum of four of them, PDFs. Who have gone on to the transit industry, that's the director of planning at Chicago's Metro, which is their, their rail system. I think seven or eight are at Womata in increasingly growing roles in their marketing department, planning, fare collection services. A bus deployment, et cetera, uh, we have, you know, multiple employees leave us and head to Dash Art, et cetera, so we are considered. One of the pipeline organizations for operations, planning, growth and development, yeah. In addition, letting everyone know, it's on our website, we had a summer marketing internship this summer, we have enough activity and a buzz. That we're looking for a, a marketing intern, so if someone has, if someone in their world, they can reach directly at, send to Christine, we'll, we'll get to that, you don't worry about that. But it is targeted. It is a summer internship, truly it's a summer, but the idea being you're going. Get to see what it's like to work inside of an operation, you're going to outreach, you're going to shake hands. Uh, you got the parking lot lots, being a chamber events and activities, but also doing the development side of how we bring graphics from idea. To product, and so we had that as well.
Thank you for that, and I will be talking to you about.
And then the, the last item is we have a couple of additional transit town halls, I know Christine has been emailing about getting that set up. I always have them in the morning. I had. The reason we do it in the mornings is because it's the only point of that information we've got, all of our other passengers, we're picking them up in the afternoon stop, so when they get to the parking lot. They will not talk to us, we have tried doing marketing because it's way easier for our marketing. To tell people about service changes, they get off the bus and they're, they don't, they don't give us the middle. But they look like they, and they go straight to their cars, uh, you know, but it's just, but in the morning.
Those are number one.
Yes, we're number. Sometimes route number two. Okay, but, so we go in the morning. And it's a great point of aggregation, everyone's got their coffee, uh, they're, they're up for the morning, and some folks are a little more chatty than others, but it's a good opportunity. To get out and have those conversations and I believe we've got supervisor Gordy and delegate Thomas, we're gonna see each other bright and early, it's Monday, the university lot. So, but always a good time and it's great for me, I enjoy going out, we, we observe slugging. We observe, uh, cars speeding through parking lot lots, uh. Supervisor Bailey and I, we had open town hall one morning, we identified about seventy-five percent of the lights were. Blown in the two thirty four lot, so we use that, I went to check our own technology, to talk to operators and smile, hear from passengers, good, bad or ugly. And really, what can we do to make improvements and, and adoption, so. Got the opportunity, we'd love to do it if you can, um, especially if I have to drive, you know, all the way down, it takes me almost an hour and a half to get from Pittsburgh, so.
So, um, one thing to consider, if we can maybe look at doing one or two in the evening at least, because. I've always thought, and I think this goes outside of how I look at things also, but I've always thought in the mornings, people are rushing to get to work, so I feel like people are. Are rushing because they're, they're probably trying to be on time or they're probably already running a little late. Whereas in the evenings, um, you have a little bit more flexibility since you're getting off the bus and you're done with your workday. Um, so if we can look at maybe at least one or two in the evening, or at least later in the morning maybe, um, but I still think. My philosophy on the mornings are like people are just rushing until they get to work and unless you're the one taking them, like, do they really want to talk?
Chairman, I think I sent somebody in. The same thing, but.
And, and so we certainly look at that, we just don't get anywhere near the response.
I'm, I'm, I'll take.
The trick is you bring your two year old daughter. Who they trust you on the bus like that. I just feel good, just out to their corner, they're waiting on the bus, you make. You need fun, you know, about.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I've seen that with the, um, with the sluggers where. Have a little bit more flexibility, but in all seriousness, we should look at, um. You know, give a, a couple of different options, because in the morning. I'm always, I'm always running.
Two last items, one is follow up before we go to Mr. Wingfield. Um, Senator McPike asked last month, I thought the opportunity you've lever two months ago to utilize some fair options. We talked to D R B T leadership and state matter consideration, we'll have more information probably next month, is that we. From that follow up and then to that, Mr. Wingfield.
Good evening, commissioners, uh. I want to start at least by thanking. Mr. Ralph. You've been coming out, uh, Ryan Ralph with us and obviously he was a tough challenge and, uh. It was fun.
We had some colorful passengers.
Yeah, so, uh, the month of April, uh, before I get into the slide, so was it painful? Uh, we had some, uh, well, new customers, uh, did a new service. Um, as well as, uh, some facility projects, uh, some upgrades going on. Created some logistical challenges, uh. So I believe these challenges, coupled with our ongoing, uh, battle with recruitment and retention. Uh, led to some of the object that you'll see, uh, here in April. Uh, with Ms. Trips, and so I want to talk about some of the things we're doing about it, we've got. A slow recruiting path that we have, and this is us utilizing our microtrans service. To more, uh, better retention by developing our staff in-house. Uh, but it's a bit slower because they come in without the C D O. Uh, we also, uh, at the same time, we've restructured our safety department so that we have a separate safety from training. So that we can just kind of bolster our, our hiring, keep it ongoing. Uh, we know it's a thing. Conversation we continue to have here, and then, uh, we also have a hiring campaign, uh. And that's this may sixth through day. We've got support, support coming into town, so those are people. Got the, the brawler that gets you excited, we do that in internet, I can get text messages saying that we're hiring. And so just trying to get the bodies in, that's the B A P P, so these are C D L holders that will bring it in. Um, so just sharing that so that you guys kind of got an idea of what is today, what we're doing about it. So. Uh, vehicle availability, eighty-five percent for the month of April, so we're at target, above. Uh, as well as between service interruptions, we are. At seventeen thousand seven. With that, I'll open the floor pretty button.
Sure, please. Uh, one thing that I just want to make a comment on is what frequently happens to being shortages is you cut the wrong forms. Uh, then Mr. Wingfield shoots, what happens is you have employees not ready to go out yet, but they're close. Or maybe they have their C D L, but they don't know the routes well, they're like, they trained on two of the three. And then dispatch makes a decision, asks that we do something different, and then that, that situation. We put safety, reliability is our first two core values. And because of that, we are not cutting the training corners, we book qualified talented employees out on the road. And if it needs, we unfortunately see a miss trip as a result, it is way worse, I mean, that is way better, excuse me, than the alternative, which is can be far worse. So I just want to make that clear that we are working and we're looking at creative ways to do things, but not the sacrifice of our citizens.
Sure.
I, I think you have one here and then we'll come over to you.
Just wanted to know, I saw the target, right moment of pause, can you? Explain the straight line to.
Sure. When you see this straight line, that's really, it's already kind of set by the contract. More in line with, I guess, uh, bodies of the industry. Generally, our standards for vehicle availability, that's tied in for example, the federal government has a spare ratio. We are maxed out at spare ratio, spare ratio twenty percent. So for example, above the line means we have more vehicles available to us than are, than are necessary, because you have to have. Vehicles to be repaired, they can have minor body damage, et cetera, so those are examples of industry standards that we utilize and that's set forth in the contract to hold them accountable.
So at this point in time, since you met the standard for so long. Do you come to present on your own, just wanted to stay with the, the standard, the industry standard.
We can stay with the industry standard for, because that is that baseline, but what we then have is we have part of our contract program, there's incentives to perform above that. So performing at the baseline gets you the baseline, performing above the baseline is that incentive that provides rewarded performance, which is tied into that contract. There is incentive to outstrip that, that baseline.
Yeah, uh, going back to the prior. Yes. Um, the mist.
Oh.
Actually, yeah, if you wanna, I was looking at the missed trips for April, yes, here, can we talk a little bit about that, I mean, it seems. To be a lot, but maybe it's.
Sure, and so revisit kind of the intro, so we, we had a new surface that we implemented, uh, we also had several facility projects, specifically with facilities projects. Uh, we moved about a third of our fleet over to the Manassas facility. Uh, it's about forty vehicles, that's about five or six mechanics that have been over thirty, thirty-five operators, uh. So it's easy when we have the bulk of our workforce here, where the bulk of our services is best out of. Is I can grab any one of you right now and say, hey, you know. I need you to go out and do a route, whereas if I've got now that, uh, split thirty miles away, doesn't have. So between the two is where you see some of that uptick and some of the things I talked about, with the recruitment. Efforts that we're making is what we're trying to do to make sure that service changes.
Sure, and so I'm assuming in May, you can expect those numbers to be lower.
Yes.
All right, well.
Oh, this is twenty twenty-four.
It's twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there? Let's see that. Yes, it's always. Now it cares us.
It's twenty twenty-five, so please just grab to change your bar. Yes.
Yeah.
And then, just a reminder, uh, we have a staff article included in. We have a staff article included about employees, um, publicly about electric vehicles. In public schools, so I think that's germane as the cities and counties that propose issues, it's a transportation issue. It's alternative fuels, there's always the one question for us, but also if you go back to your. Your districts and you may wonder, hey, what are some opportunities we've got and what are to include that? So with that, Mr. Chair, a long report with lots of employee celebrations, yeah.
And congratulations. So, here we go, you've got one, one, two questions, it's actually mutual choice presentation. Uh, that's the angle, we, we got that, the floor is yours, sir.
All right, well, thank you, sure. Uh, before I get into, uh, this year's program, we provide a professor on the program, uh, so this is a program, uh, joint partnership. N B T T, their T C and on the love, uh. Uh, Virginia, it is administered by N B T C. You think a portion of full revenue committed in the employee or. Uh on you think a portion of full revenue committed to the employee or to independently fund. Kind of dynamics along. Quick recap of the program development process. Um December, the application period closed and received fifteen applications. Uh but they took ultimately thirty-seven point five million funding. Uh in February, applications for the finalized access applicants in March, the online. Uh type of comment period opened by in April, the uh vote comment period was held. On April twenty fourth, the joint mission working group endorsed the staff. Uh this slideshow of program projects is recommended by the N B T C P R T C Joint Commission Working Group. Um program projects include fifteen projects across six grantees totaling thirty-nine point five million dollars in. Uh that includes thirteen operating projects and two capital. Uh this slide is the first of two showing this year's staff recommended projects, including a proposed funding awards. And applications for uh capital projects are shown in blue with operating projects shown in green. Uh this cycle for Fairfax County's Richmond Highway B R T implementation project will receive a second ten million dollar award. Uh fulfilling a twenty million dollar commitment to the project that was to be split across two funding rounds. Uh that was approved by the commissions in the prior. Uh after an eligibility review, all eligible projects were scored to ensure a demonstrated requisite benefit to taxpayers. The most heavily weighted scoring metric is personal throughput. Uh or how efficiently the project moves people through the board. Uh so these are the remaining projects recommended for funding. Uh the total proposed funding for the fifteen projects is thirty-nine million, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. Uh two thousand two included twelve enhanced bus service projects. One bus traffic transit line, one bus wrap and one rail station. Uh fifteen projects include all eligible applications submitted to funding. Uh given the benefits that each application demonstrated during the evaluation process and the total funding. Uh wanna highlight quickly our online uh public comment period, which was held March twelfth through April eleventh. And for the com- of the public or agency to submit comments, be an online survey and email uh for fifteen submissions were received. Uh staff also held a public hearing. Uh on April twenty fourth to provide additional opportunity for members of the public to make comments. On the projects under consideration funding. Uh I think hearing two comments were made, both in support of Dash's line thirty-five and thirty-six. Service enhancement projects. Uh so this slide shows some upcoming dates in the program approval process. Today, both commissions are receiving a briefing on the. Joint Commission Working Group's recommended program projects. On May twentieth, the full Commonwealth uh Transportation Board will be briefed on the trade up program. And on June fifth, both commissions will be asked. To approve transmitting the final program projects to C T V for inclusion in the six-year program. Uh C T V is scheduled to meet on June twenty-fifth to approve the finals to improvement program, including uh the F Y twenty-six, twenty-seven choice program. Uh and before I turn over for questions, uh there's just a couple of policy considerations for future. Uh funding rounds that I wanna highlight. Uh so we do anticipate future funding rounds to be highly competitive with limited funding available. Uh it's also important to note that service enhancement projects must be applied for funding. Every two years and funding is not guaranteed uh beyond a two-year cycle. Uh and then finally reminded that per the M O A community trust funding for operations projects cannot see fifty percent way rolling that year. Uh creating the need to fund strategic. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Richard, yeah, uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, one of the thank uh the chairman, the commission for trusting that you serve on the the joint uh working group. Less of question, more comment. I know we had a great discussion our last meeting. And one of the things I wanted to highlight is that um. Couple of questions were asked, you know, some of the waiting around the the projects. And what we talked about is the fact that isn't just the internal uh sort of waiting of the 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 project. So they look at also the cog. Activity centers and the uh and the equity emphasis areas and focus on that in that at least some county or superiors. We've been beginning brief by our plan department that we're in the process of updating our uh activity centers on the cog level. So. I just wanted to uplift that, you know, for future rounds for next year, especially having more opportunities for us to really apply for more projects. You know, it's gonna be competitive, but I think that we're a unique place where we have some more of those equity emphasis areas. In strategic parts of the county that I think would really help us out. So just wanted to to uplift that. And I did also mention that since it's the second year of that twenty million dollar um. Commitment to that B R T for Fairfax might open up an opportunity for us.
The uh we got.
There's more of a comment I just received. They people that have looked into those projects that my district, since I go from. From Cleveland County, all the move onwards to Fairfax have seen that Richmond Highway expansion and the work. I think it's worth part.
Like it.
So we'll be back next month.
Alright, thank you, sir. Thank you for that. And next, we got another presentation. We're moving into it. I'm gonna employee resource group. This is your names. One more time, the floor is yours.
Great, but this is the basic. That's nice. I'm gonna introduce myself. Um my name is Shanayn Al-Tamman, C P L program associate, work sample mine is. But before that, I was a customer service agent and Jack Markway. Thank you. And you're my first trainer. You have always been an amazing person. And it was sad when I left that I'm always having made. For those of you who don't know, Jack has been, I mean, unbelievably instrumental when we did complaints together for years and the one that I know. I don't know if I'd still be standing. We're done. Also, thank you to the congratulations seventy-seven. I am a mentor from them before, so I know that that program works quite. So once again, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to update you on the Omni Ride Employee Resources Working Group. Um I'm thankful for the support from the executive staff and the board. For all of the guidance that you've given us over the years. It has been a comfort for many of us to look back with all the good work that is working this time. Hope that makes it right. Okay, very well. We have built a foundation based upon our five and four values. And our organizational cultural teaching plan of workplace, workforce and community. Omni Ride has been able to show the benefits of a program structure that helped all employees, not to be productive, have worked. But it has also created an environment where employees feel heard and acknowledged. In November and October, we welcomed back Bruce Sugar, or two lovely seven. October's make your mental health a priority and get empowered and November's. I'm sorry, I'm. Oh, it's going to okay. I need to do the same next slide, so I apologize. And November's um. How to manage stress of the holidays as a mental health warrior gave us very useful tips to manage anxiety and stress. In December. Omni Ride and Keolosis and the Engagement Committee hosted a holiday refreshment. In December, we hosted our engagement. In February, we just finished the hotel getting party at both the facilities. Which gave an opportunity for staff to connect with various members of the staff that they normally would not interact with about a regular day. For that, I would like to thank Christine Rarivo, Becky Mary, Tracy Dean, Lyric Jones, and I D. Sprague. For all their hard work in putting these events together. In March, we celebrated National Transit Employee Appreciation Day and all employees received hard and a lovely pen to commemorate that. As we move forward, we will continue to promote our psychologically safe workplace. And we are committed to the ideas that our valued skills and talents are beneficial for our productive working. Thank you all again so much for the support that you've given us over the years. And I would be happy to say anything.
Let me just start by saying I'm very impressed. Cause I remember when we kind of stood this up and I remember. Your first presentation. This this is just really good. I would say leaders build teams. Things build to your mind. And that environment. It's special because it can be a toxic environment or can be a fully family functioning environment. That's what it sounds like, you know. And I know it's come from a past that you act as zero business. So I'm just very impressed. This is good.
I am honored to respect that we've had such an amazing turnout and that so many of our employees are a member of this resource group. It does give us a lot more to work with and we're able to see things a lot.
Any any questions? Well, now, we have no action items. I have no comments. Where we at? What, what? Oh, that was shocking. That was shocking. So I was like, wow, what? Okay, I'm gonna start my hand.
Thanks, because it's natural nurse's week, so we see a nerve. Thank us for all we do. Yeah, there's no way I knew what you do. We're we're just part of a critical workforce that's psychological and physical. Please make sure that we're good down here. We'll appreciate it.
Good luck. It thanks for saying that. There's also this is military appreciation mindset. Would you say thank you to our military? A lot of them. They are our writers and a lot of. Yes, there is both of them.
She's the president chair. Can she skip her action?
Oh, yeah.
He said no action.
Oh, there's there's no action items. Yeah. Here's what was that? Where'd you get it?
First of all. But never by one. Sorry, no.
Yeah, we're gonna be here. I got authorized. Makes sense.
Create action.
Definitely. Really? Yeah. All right.
He is sponsoring the Great Train Race, you know, Saturday, Sunday. It's um really cute. And if you have little people who wanna run. Um I don't know if you can still sign up, but it's it's a really good um community.
So um we want to um just encourage our young people in this fall and graduation season to be careful. Riders to slow down on the roads and just take a little bit more time to protect our young people. Also, next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And all of us have had a teacher. So um let's make sure that you take the time to recognize the teacher.
Uh just want to thank Omni Ride for the opportunities for commissioners to engage with riders. Um I know a few people have some schedule looking to reschedule. At every time that is not six AM. Um they're doing it because um you know, I'd be curious to talk to our riders and experience now versus. Uh pre-COVID. Um so if you haven't signed up, please do. And then Prince William County, we're supervisors. We just approved our budget. Um did some things for transportation there. So um have to talk more about that. And then. Just looking ahead, I know that we talked about doing some more lobbying efforts from the commissioners ourselves when. Um when session comes about for the general assembly.
You heard it's wreck on his site.
Of course, to be clear, the Prince William County delegation has been um very supportive of local transit systems and many doors. So. That's the least of our problems. We gotta push them to. Get their colleagues more support.
I'm gonna say nothing.
So is that the key?
Well, well done. I have a couple of quick items. Uh the governor's final actions on the budget are due. So season for those items. Uh appreciate a part of your call, but. Certainly the deal of engagement state grant the next month. And then maybe have a consistent. Update on actually overcrowding buses that we had in our last meeting, but not this meeting. That would be helpful to understand the perspective of your riders. Uh in terms of if if sort of standing on buses that's persisted. Does it decrease and will change features because of that? I think that's really important for commissioners to understand as we sort of assess. And changing commuting patterns within our region. It would be really helpful to keep that on. During this sort of convergence and need of intensity that is. Changing a lot of things. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um it's also here where it's small. It's not something I'm there where it's small, just letting you know that. Uh and then I do plan on, I don't know which less prompt it is, but going from here to DC. You know, I pass those buses every other Thursday or so. What's the Thursday? Yeah, I got my haircut. I pass some nice buses. Of Army rides. I wanna make sure I'm able to get on that route because that's the one I see the most. Uh just to talk to some. So I my goal is before the end of the year.
Before this year.
That is my baseline. Now, if I two or three, I'm a love baseline. I don't know what it's and symptoms I may get, but. One ride on it.
Uh the Commonwealth Transportation Board's uh F Y twenty-six. It was Nova District. It's next Thursday at five PM. That's the via Nova District. You can get that. I'm in on the session. No, I just sell the beer.
Yeah. Is that is that, do we have that in the email? For me, both will do that. You have to lock that on camera. Okay, oh, you want it?
Yes, um the comments about uh. Natural versus weak, natural. We will see that on our destination signs because we've already got this programmed in. So that's pretty.
And even something sure we.
Now it's pushing a national park team higher today.
That's what I mentioned. That that's it, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for another great agent. We'll see you. It's doing as best thing. All of the years.